All right, we have a quorum, so let's call this meeting to order, please.
Starting with roll call, Board Member De La Sierra.
Present.
Board Member Julia.
Present.
Board Member Leoncio.
Present.
And Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, a moment of silence? Thank you, may be seated. Mr. Clerk, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
I file a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion. Okay, roll to approve the minutes, Board Member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Board Member Julia?
Yes.
Board Member Leoncio? And Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved.
Okay, do we have any public comments, Mr. Clerk?
No one is online, and I believe we have no public comments here present as well.
Okay, so we'll move on to our, our next agenda item. Uh, it's five, five A, correct? Five A?
Yes, Mr. Chair, please be advised at this time that the following items on the board's agenda are quasi judicial in nature. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross examination. If you do not wish to be either cross examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross examine witnesses. On their ba- One, to, to, I'm sorry, to cross examine witnesses. But the public may request the board to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for that organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should provide the town clerk with a minimum of ten copies. Further details of the quasi judicial procedure may be obtained from the clerk. At this time, the matter that's before you is Mr. Carlos Andres, it's variance twenty twenty-five zero two eight six. And what would be appropriate now is for all those that are gonna be giving testimony to be sworn in, Mr. Chair.
Okay, those individuals who will be providing testimony, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear that a testimony you will provide is the truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you, may be seated.
At this time, Mr. Chair, it would be wise if all those who have had any ex parte communications and have not previously disclosed it, to disclose it at this time.
I have nothing to disclose.
I have nothing to disclose.
And nothing to disclose on mine, we've all turned in our ex parte official signature declarations. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, at this time then, it would be, the first thing is for us to hear first from the city, and then after the, the town has presented its case, then the applicant will be, provide an opportunity to provide theirs, and then anyone from the public can provide testimony as well.
Excellent, city's ready? Or town?
Hello, Justin Tellarria, Transportation Coordinator. We're presenting, as Lorenzo stated, VIRH twenty twenty-five zero zero three three. Carlos Andres is the applicant, the location is one four five three zero Date Pine Ave. And staff is recommending denial for the proposal as shown in the attached plans. And the requests are three variances, or three requests, sorry. And the first one, there's actually a typo, it's supposed to be from section thirteen dash sixteen oh five. All of them are in the waterfront properties section. The first one would be to permit construction of an accessory building with a total area of four twenty-eight square feet, which would exceed the maximum size of one fifty square feet. And the second request is to allow expanding the pavers beyond the tie line to nine hundred and fifteen square feet, where two hundred and twenty-five is the maximum allowed beyond the tie line. And the third request is to allow pool decking to be located five feet from the side property line beyond the tie line, where the minimum required setback is seven and a half feet, seven point five feet. And that's all.
Mr. Chair?
At this time, we, it would probably be proper to hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Vice Chair, Board Members and Town Management, thank you for your time. Carlos Andres, one four five three zero Date Pine Avenue, Miami Lakes Florida, three three zero one four. I'm here to request a variance for those three items that were mentioned by staff. But before I do that, just give a little introduction of myself and my family. I've been here since nineteen ninety-two, my wife has been here since seventy-nine. Consider ourselves, you know, very strong supportive Miami Lakers. You know, definitely community first. I showcase that by, you know, my public service to the town, been involved with the Par Three Committee. I'm the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, active neighbor in, in my neighborhood, which obviously this application for these variances is, is good to discuss with neighbors and make sure they don't have any objections to it. And my children, Brielle and Emery are here. They're schools of Bob Graham, and they're happy here to support this cause, because this eventually will be for them. This is our dream home, this is for them to enjoy, you know, their backyard and the beautiful lake that we have, Lake Martha. And essentially, what the project that we're seeking to do is an open concept terrace with pavers to extend and accommodate the design. This will lead to a new roof, and eventually, you know, will be a pool that we plan to remodel, so that my girls can have, you know, their friends over and not be embarrassed that the pool's from nineteen eighty. But nonetheless, to start off with my testimony, is essentially, there's a third variance on there that states that I am beyond the, the setback by two and a half feet. We're gonna waive that, that was actually a typo, that's that third request, we don't seek that. Now, to go into, you know, some of the analysis that was performed by staff, and we've, we've done our analysis ourselves, along with, you know, my architect that's helping with this project. I have passed out the appendix and letters that you all have received. There's six letters there, and those six letters, two of them are, are my neighbors that I share my yard with that are supportive of these variances. One of them is my backdoor neighbor, which would be directly impacted by this, which is Rafael. They have all signed the letters, so my immediate neighbors are Josie, Josefina, and Lilium as well. So, those are the argument when it comes to letter A in the analysis performed by staff. Now, the, the property, we see photos in there of what is currently under, there's a gazebo in the back, which, you know, surprisingly actually is, is permitted, so that was approved in two thousand and three. And I've attached that as an exhibit, you'll find that in your exhibit D. And, you know, that's above the survey line, but nonetheless, it sits there in the present moment. The, the next point, which is letter C, the essential character of the neighborhood would be preserved. So essentially, you know, the, the, this design, you know, obviously is a big investment, and it's an investment we wanna make for this property, we call our dream home, is to extend the roof line. So the, you know, there is no pergola, there is no aluminum roof, this is gonna be the same roof line of the house. And I've, I've attached actually a exhibit B, which is a neighbor that has the similar design. The difference is that he has a wall, and ours will be open terrace. Now, the, the variance can be, now we're moving on to letter D, the variance can be approved without causing substantial detriment. Well, speaking of drainage, there, when we purchased the property, there was a wood dock, that wood dock is no longer there. We removed that, that was affecting the drainage, so that's, that sense has been removed. Doesn't show in the, in the survey, but nonetheless, that's been resumed, removed, and that's actually included in a exhibit. And that exhibit is, I wanna say exhibit E. Now, the area between the lake and the gate, I, I measured it today conservatively. It's probably more than this, but it's eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet of grass. You know, and that's obviously where the majority of drainage goes through right now. And that's also a photo that I've attached in exhibit C. Now, the next thing that's, that's interesting here, and some of the research I've been doing and going through the different sections of the code, is that the, the actual tie line is, works against us when it comes to the top of the slope. You know, so the top of the slope is actually a little further than the tie line by approximately four feet. And I've actually shown this, I took a photo of it today, and that is actually one of the exhibits as well. And you'll see that on exhibit F. So you'll see that, that paver that is different than the orange, you know, ugly paver, is, is where the top of the slope, I would think, is, when you go up to it, you see it slowly decreasing downhill. And I know that there's, there's, you know, in the code thirteen dash sixteen oh five, letter B, there's an opportunity for, you know, the administration to possibly, you know, entertain the idea of the slope being the, the survey line. The, the next item is E, the variance will do substantial justice to the property owner. And I, I believe it, it would, we will, we believe it would. You know, so essentially, right now, when, you know, neighbors in Lake Martha, they, they see my property, you know, where the gate is. And essentially, that is, that is a photo that I've attached, that's exhibit C. So you'll see how my property, or our property, has that, that fence runs into hedges, and kinda goes traditionally with my neighbor Lily. So, in addition to that, you know, the reason why we actually feel that this, because of our property and the way it sits on the actual land, we feel that this design is actually more conservative than going according to code. Because if you go according to code, for an accessory building, you would have to go ten feet off the wall, that would put us deeper into the area of, you know, the lake and the drainage area. So we feel that it's actually accommodating that aspect of it. The next letter, which is talking about the, the, the unique circumstance of the property, letter F. In this case, I'm a strong believer, and I think this is the most important part of our debate. When you look at exhibit A, which is the survey, you'll see that the left side of our home is approximately forty-four feet. That, you know, it, it sits in the front, and that forty-four feet, as you can see technically, you can, you know, modify that, a certain portion of that forty-four feet. That forty-four feet essentially has really what has, what brings us here today. So, you know, that's, you know, where we have a unique circumstance. The neighbor that I took a picture of, his terrace, lives in my same neighborhood. His front yard is just much smaller than mine, so his property sits, you know, closer to the sidewalk. And he has the ability to do what he did without a variance. So essentially, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's our, our items that we have for debate. You know, I would, we would really appreciate your support with this. You know, this is, you know, investment and beautification at its finest, you know, it, it will increase the square footage of our home, bring up the value for our home, bring up the value for our neighbors. You know, and, and the neighbors, you know, and, and our family can, can gather under this terrace and have a, a nice time. Thank you.
I have a question for the Chair.
Go ahead.
The existing fence that's on the property.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a permit for that, 'cause I see you found her for the gazebo.
That, I, I did my research, and there is no permit for that.
So that fence is there without a permit?
I, I purchased a home with that fence, so I have no problem as a condition to remove that fence in order for me to comply with code enforcement.
And the pavers that are down, that was done with, all the pavers that I see on the property, I see a gazebo permit, no drawing for it, but are all those pavers approved, was, were all those part of a permit?
So when I, when I researched-
Because it's all beyond, it's all beyond the tie line, which is the same as the top of slope, by the way.
Um, yes, sir, so when I purchased a home, those papers were there. And you can actually see that in the survey that I, that's attached to the agenda, because that's a survey we, we got when we purchased a home. So when I looked at the permit, I see a permit for the front of the home with a walkway, so I don't think those papers are there with a permit.
You didn't get the permit, actual copy of the permit drawings, that the, this would've been through the county?
Well, when, when I looked on there today, I didn't see anything that said backyard, pavers, it just said front. It said front with a walkway. It just said front. It said front with a walkway when I, when I looked at the permitting system. So I looked at both. I looked at Miami Dade County and I looked at Miami Lakes. And I didn't see anything that said, you know, backyard pavers. So more than likely, my predecessor put those without a permit in.
So you have an existing pool. You want to change it, make it bigger, provide a stand?
Yes. The, the, the pool is, is a, is a project we're going to do down the line. Obviously, this is the first step. God willing, we get this opportunity. But the pool eventually either will be redone where it is, exists right now in that kidney shape, or we might move it to, obviously to comply with setbacks to the corner of the lot. Most people in our neighborhood, they usually go the seven and a half feet off the fence, and they, they kind of put a rectangular pool along the property line. So those are the two options that we're looking at.
You're now, what, nine, 10 feet away from the property line with the existing pool?
That's a good guess. Yeah. I, because the, and, yeah. I didn't measure it. My apologies, but I would, I would say that's a good estimate. Yes.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
I have a question. So that, that area right adjacent to where you were proposing the terrace, that's like, what is, that area there is like a bedroom or?
Yes, that's our master bedroom.
Because it looks to me, according to the survey, that even that part of the house was built on top of the survey tie line according to this.
Yeah, it's past the survey tie line, but it, it showed it, and it was in the paperwork, that that was being withdrawn because it was originally permitted and done that way. Past the tie line by two feet, I believe, two and a half feet.
Two feet, two and a half feet, yes. Correct.
The survey that you submitted, is it the one that says target survey, surveying or?
Yes, sir.
And that, what's, I'm trying to figure out the date of that survey. Is that when you bought the property originally?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And when was that?
Six, 2016.
So all those pavers and all that stuff was already there? Was the gazebo there or no, or that?
Yes, yes, it was. Yeah.
Is this, the paver in the, in the driveway, is that the same paver along the side?
Yes. And that's where I was hoping that it would say something on the Miami Lakes permitting system, but it just says circular driveway with a walkway. So I made an assumption that it wasn't part of that permit, you know, and was done without permit.
And the terrace that you're proposing in the back is 15 feet by the 28, I guess, 28 and a half?
Yes. Yeah, we'll follow the same-
Because right now, do you have any part that's covered terrace?
In, in the rear side of the home, just the gazebo.
Right, because your L is where your pool is. There's nothing, there's no covered terrace in that area.
Well, yes, the, the overhang, I believe is about seven and a half feet, give or take. Yeah.
Yeah, my, my brother's house, my brother's house is very, looks kind of like this, so I kind of have an idea how it looks inside.
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's some models that are similar. Some are for whatever reason 100 feet more, so, yeah.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
I have one more question for the Chair.
Go ahead. No, no, go, go.
You have an area that is 311 by 359. Now, you could actually build in if you changed the pool and you made the pool within the, within the limits of the property line. You could put the pool on the property line, make a 12-foot pool. It still would leave you 18 feet clear where you could set up a kitchen along that 35-foot line and do whatever you wanted to do in that area without having to come before us for a variance and maintain it all within your property.
Yeah, and, and, and the reason why we didn't choose that option was for two reasons. Number one, because we're still debating if, you know, we have budget to move the pool. And then the next reason is because, quite frankly, it's just not, the air doesn't flow as good as it should in that area. So when you set in the back of the house, you get the nice breeze of the lake. And essentially, the terrace is the perfect location for that spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one of my questions was answered about the fence and the tie line. And then, how many, how many feet beyond the tie line is the, the pavers?
The, the existing pavers?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to say, well, on, on one portion of it, you have four feet. So if you're looking at Exhibit A, that goes beyond the tie line by, 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 let me make sure. I measured that today. Yeah, it's actually five, five feet beyond the tie line, okay? On the right-hand side. And then on the left-hand side, where the proposed terrace is, it goes, it goes beyond it by 15 feet.
The pavers now, currently?
Yes.
So basically, you would, you would be taking the area that's already got pavers on it. Is this, am I correct, and adding the cover equal to the square footage of the pavers?
No, the, actually, the idea is, and I'm glad you asked that question because I didn't mention it in my testimony, the idea is that we're going to remove everything we have now.
Right.
And then it would be all new, you know, pavers.
No, no, I understand that. What I'm asking is, the distance from the wall of the home to the end of the pavers, is that equal square footage to what you want to build in, in the new construction?
Yes, on the left-hand side, that is, that is correct. On the, on the right-hand side, the second variance is essentially to put the, let me show you. If you look at-
Am I not seeing something here?
Yeah, so then, where they get the math for the 900 square feet, if you look at the proposed plan, and I don't know what page is that on the agenda, but you'll see that there's the covered patio terrace, and on the right-hand side, there's pavers across.
Give me one second.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So on that left side, the pavers extend to the left of the house. So you would take out those pavers and not replace them?
That's correct. So-
That's why you're not asking that other variance.
Correct. Yeah, in fact, what ended up happening, and it was an error, on the proposed plan, on the right-hand side, there's the two and a half feet.
Right.
So that, I, I don't, we, we dismiss that variance. Now, on the left-hand side, there's actually pavers there now. And when we put the new pavers in, they will be removed and not added back. Because that will comply with the seven and a half foot setback.
Do you know, staff wise, the pavers on the right that were there from before, is he going to run into an issue?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Is any, because obviously, there, there had to have been a variance for that. Or if not, they're not, they're done without a permit, not legal. Because if you need, if, if it's seven and a half feet from one side, it has to be seven and a half feet from the other side.
Well, I, I will tell you that we went through this when I was on the council. And in, in my own home, there was an issue as well. And in 2000, when the town became a town, the amount of paperwork that the county handed over to the town was in a, a box of, where you, you get the, the paper, the loose, the paper that goes into the copier, copier box. And I think it was maybe an inch thick of documentation from the county. So there may be a variance before 2000 to this, because he bought it in 2016. It was already existing. There may be a permit, and we'll have no way of knowing that. Because the, when the county transferred that information over, and this was told to me by the previous building officials when we were doing some research on my property specifically, we found this out. So that's why I'm asking you, sir, because you're, you have 15 feet of pavers now, but you're asking for 19 feet, right? And is 15 feet not, I mean, I'm seeing what your neighbors are seeing, because I see the pictures that you provided from the backyard.
Right.
Right? So, and you have an existing gazebo, which aesthetically, I don't think it's pleasing. I'm sure that's probably what's happening to you as well. And it's not functional, at least not to today's standards.
Absolutely.
You know, but is 15 feet not enough there? That's why I'm asking about the 15 feet gap of pavers. That, that four feet that you need is, I mean, the extra four feet, is it that critical to your, to try to stay inside the boundary of what you currently have, is what I'm asking?
That's essentially what I'm doing. Right? So, and, and, and maybe, and my apologies if I, if I misunderstand you. But yes, the, the 15 feet that is on there is what I would need, you know, for the terrace. Now, the proposed project, and hopefully I'm answering, I answer your question correctly, is that because I'm extending my, you know, the variance for the 15 feet, I'm asking for the, the pavers to be parallel from left to right of the property. And that's where the 900 square feet in the second variance comes up from.
And I think the 19 feet, let me just interrupt here, excuse myself. But I think the 19 feet is from the survey tie line. So I guess his house is like four feet beyond the survey tie line. And then there's the 15 feet of his terrace.
Right.
That's what I'm looking on.
That's exactly what I see as well. Yep.
That's what I'm looking there.
Yeah, that's my concern. My, my only thing was the, your proposal, you already have, you know, 15. It looks probably a little bit more of total. It would be 19 feet from the tie line. I'm not so worried about the tie line. Right? Because the house is existing, and it's already been there. And obviously, they wouldn't let you get to this, to this depth if there was any violations that they found. So we go back to, and it, and my, my calculator here. I'm looking at 15 plus, maybe two more. Is that 17? Am I looking at, on there on page 18?
Now I understand you. Now I understand what you're saying. You're talking about the right-hand side of the property? Because technically, there's 15 feet where the terrace is, the proposed terrace, but on the other side.
Right.
Right.
I'm not worried about the other side.
Now I got it.
Because I know you want to equal one to the other. I got you.
Right.
My thing is, I'm not so worried about the pavers because you'll still have the runoff is the, your, your covered terrace that you're trying to build. So I see that from the property line, the edge of the house to-
The edge of the house.
To the end of the pavers is probably about 17 feet, no?
Yeah, as he's going, you, the, the measurement that I can see here, from the edge of the house to the outside part of the column that he's proposing is 13 feet. And then you're showing beyond that, the, a line, a dotted line that shows to me it would be concrete that he's acting in there.
Right. You know, I, I, I want to say, because I literally was out there measuring that before I got here. I think it's something the way he designed that, but I know for a fact that, and the reason why I'm guiding myself through this is because if you notice, that dotted line is where the gate is, which obviously will come out.
Yes.
That gate is 15 feet from the wall.
Okay.
So it's, that for sure-
You're talking about the fence?
The fence, yes.
The fence that is now, you're going to run this all the way to the bushes that you have there. It's a fence covered by, by bushes.
That's correct. Yeah, and those bushes will come out.
That's all, that's, that's going all the way to the grass that you have covered by bushes. I saw it in a picture.
Right.
And I saw it before, right in there.
Yep.
It would be Exhibit D.
Yeah, Ms. Alonso, are you, I know you, you guys are against it. The city is, the town is against it. But he's already got pavers, so for drainage purposes, this wouldn't add or decrease anything from what he currently has, correct?
Correct. I've discussed with Sam in the past, removing all the pavers that are within the seven and a half or five feet within, and replacing it with a walkway and all that stuff. Obviously, the pavers are already there. Extending the pavers, obviously, is the part that we have more of a problem with because we're making more pavers. And that's what's-
That's, so the total length, yeah, it's a second variance.
Yes, sir.
And that, that same variance was four feet, you said?
Yeah, I, I did, I did some, well, now, my math was a little off because I was, you got me on the two feet. But actually, I thought I did, you know, it's funny because I might actually, because I, what I got was 60 by 15. That's what I got, which is 900 square feet. I'm 15 feet shy of what's on the variance right now. But like you said, and, and maybe my calculations are kind of, you know, maybe not on point of those two feet, because if you notice, the property kind of does a downward angle. And I think that's why I'm coming up with 15 feet on the right side, because it's going like this. So you're coming up with 17 feet because you're thinking the house is perfectly square. But, you know, again, I'm going to the, yeah.
And, and just as a reminder of what is allowed per code is a detached structure that is 150 square feet with corresponding 225 square feet of pavers underneath, which is a little bit more than the 150 square feet that the structure is. He currently has, he currently has about 400 square feet of pavers, which is already a little bit more than the 225 he's allowed. And the structure that he's requesting is larger than the 150 that it would be allowed if it was detached.
Yeah, but a detached structure would make it, what, eight feet, eight feet by, by five? I mean, something ridiculous. I mean, just asking. It, it, it-
Yes, those are, those are-
It would look oddly ridiculous.
Those are small detail, yeah.
Right, but I'm saying, it would look, it would look awkwardly detached and-
So a 10 by 20 would be 200 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, so exactly.
Pretty large, you know, so you're looking probably like a 14 by 18, which is huge also.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem with, with going up to, up to the, the paver. I, I see. Are we, are we done with questions so we can go into the discussion part of it?
You would need to close the hearing and then go into discussion.
Yeah, any more questions? No? Are you good, Row?
What you're proposing, I mean, let me make sure. So the terrace would basically be the wall of your master bedroom?
That's correct. That would be, it would be-
Because on one of the plans, it has like a little, it almost looked like it if it extended, but it could, so, so it's just basically going to be completely the paved area now, just beyond your, your, your master bedroom. That's variance number one, shall we say?
Correct.
Variance number two is to extend that same deck behind your pool to kind of square it off.
Yes.
And variance number three is gone?
It's gone. Yeah.
All right, any more questions so we can close our question, answering question session? We're good? Okay, Mr. Attorney, we're going to go ahead and close and go into discussion.
Sure.
Okay. So if anybody wants to go first, you're welcome to do-
I want to make sure anybody else had anything to say.
Town, anything to say?
There are no public comments online.
Yeah, because we had already, we already had the public side. I'll just go and say, I mean, I, I'm looking at the proposal that you're trying to do. You don't have a backdoor neighbor, literally, because you have a canal back there or a lake. And you're not going, I, I have a different definition than the town of the slope, right? So I don't totally agree with the slope and the way the slope is, so I have an issue. But I think you're going to be bringing something functional to your family and, and pleasing to the eye of, of your neighbors. My only thing is, and then, I should have asked you this earlier, but maybe the town can, how, how far, Ms. Alonso, how far from where the existing fence is to where the structure ends? Once he removes the fence, I know, but is there, is there a, a measurement from where the fence?
It's not indicated in the survey. It looks to be about 15 feet, 15 feet more or less?
So there'll be 15 feet of grass between the end of the, the end of the construction to, to where the existing fence is now?
Correct. Well, if you don't-
No, there'll be not, it's going to the existing fence.
Not in, not as proposed.
Oh, it's going to go up to-
The existing fence.
Right, it'll go up to the existing fence. So, okay, I got you.
He's taking all that-
Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry. Okay. If you, if anybody wants to make another comment, go ahead while I review something.
If you refer to your package, the page after the survey in your package shows the proposed configuration, and then there's a blowout next to it. It's Pages A1 and A2.
Yeah, through the chair, I, uh, sometimes when you have a, uh, area like this is in, and it's been all done, and is allowed, sometimes it's better to keep it than to come before the town because we've never approved anything this egregious. Art is going into the area past the tie line. We're talking about going, let me see. It's fifteen by almost sixty, 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 seventy-five feet, that he's trying to, sixty feet, fifteen by sixty feet, that's egregious. I mean, we've had people come in for a two-foot, five-foot variance at the corner of the bo- property for a corner of a pool. This is like way beyond, and I mean, he has it, and he's maintaining what he has, and if he maintains in the area of where he has the pool, he can actually do everything he wants to do there. I, uh, I really feel like it's way too much, just beyond what we've ever even considered to allow.
I, I mean, that's why, that's why I was asking about the existing pavers and going in and.
Right, but he has it existing, he can keep it.
Right, but I'm saying using that, let's say, let's say he asks for that variance up to the existing pavers. Um, you know, the, the thirteen feet or fifteen feet that he's got now. But I'm just saying, if, if it went up to the existing pavers, but he's going beyond the existing pavers,
Way beyond, and carrying it all the way across.
Where my concern is as well as yours.
Yeah, and carrying it all the way across.
That's my concern, right?
And as long as he has it and it's existing according to the town,
Right.
If, if it was there existing, he can keep it. Really, when he purchased the property, once, if it was after the town became a town, he would have to remove it.
Right, no, no, I'm saying if, if he chose to go up to, I, I mean, I can, I, I, I can tolerate and, and palette that. Up to the pavers, let's say he says, look, I'm taking out the pavers, I'm gonna put concrete up to where the pavers are and build a roof in that area, you know, it's already there, the, the, that's why I asked about the water drainage. And I can deal with that, but going all the way to the fence and it's, I mean, the house is already past the tie line. So is the pool maybe technically? So I, I understand what Mr. Sierra is saying about moving the pool and, but it just,
Plenty of room.
It's gonna cause, it's gonna cause, I think, a, a really bad precedence to allow it to go that far out. And that's my concern.
If, if, um, to, to town, eh, to the staff, if we were to move, let's say, agree to the covered, the terrace component, and not the second component of the nine hundred square feet, how does that work with the pavers that are there now that we know he's, the intent is to replace him, I mean, does he get missed, you know, like, will he need a permit to replace the existing?
You could approve one request and not the other. You can approve the request for the.
I know, but I, I, but my concern is if we approve the terrace,
Okay.
and don't say how many square feet we're gonna allow him on the bottom, we know that they're gonna replace that paver. Is he gonna run into a situation where he's taking out that paver and now putting in a new paver, and then they're gonna say, you didn't, you know, you don't have a permit to replace the paper?
You can approve the, you can approve the, the roof area and the pavers underneath. And legalize the pavers underneath and the same, with the same action. Does that make sense? So this is, this is a situation, uh, we've discussed this in the past, a little vocabulary lesson, is a situation where we have an existing non-conforming structure. Eh, it could be a legal existing non-conforming structure or an illegal existing non-conforming structure. Whether it's legal or illegal is the part that is in question. If there was ever a permit for it, then it's a legal existing non-conforming. If there was never a permit for it, it's illegal non-conforming. Legal non-conforming is what it is. If he removes it, then it's gone. If he doesn't remove them, then he can keep them. Illegal non-conforming, we could potentially ask him to remove them uh, by virtue of a violation or some other, uh, instrument of the town. However, you may grant partially the paver variance, not to extend further, but to legalize the existing pavers. And allow the roofing of whatever square footage you choose to grant. Because you don't have to grant the entire square footage he's requesting either. Sorry.
When, when that gazebo permit, uh, it says it was applied two thousand and three, were, were you already, were incorporated?
Yes.
Right.
Something that, I'm, I'm gonna stick my cucharada, is that, I'm looking just as far back as the property pressure goes. And those pavers and, they were there, it seems.
Yes, staff, staff has gone back to nineteen ninety-seven and seen them there, so, yeah, they've been there for a while. And you can tell that they've been there for a while.
Something that, that old, that back, I, I would almost consider it a, a, a legal non-conforming.
No, there's annual pictures. All the back, all the way back to the thirties. I've seen them.
Yeah, so that's, that's what happened with my property that was an issue. And we had to go to aerial pictures and go back and we were able to find that. So, um, have you measured what the terrace would be if you went right up to where the pavers are now? I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney.
You'd have to open.
Yeah, make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
My, my bad.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Second.
Think everybody's in favor.
Mr. Julia. Oh, Mr., go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Go ahead. Now you can ask.
Now you know.
Just do it.
So a public hearing is now open.
You're absolutely right.
Just do it.
We're back.
No, no, you're absolutely right. I get a step, I get ahead of myself.
So then they say you didn't do it.
Absolutely. Public, a public hearing is open again. Sir.
Thank you. So the, and it's funny because there's been so much measurements, uh, that I've been taking. It's like, you almost lose track of it. You know, something that I was, you know, keeping in the back of my head, um, or, you know, if I were to leave what is there right now, and take care of, because on the left-hand side, it's non-conforming. Because it, it goes beyond the seven and a half feet, right? So if I fix that, and I just did what I wanted to, the covered terrace up to the overhang. Okay, so it would be the overhang that I have now existing, runs all the way through the extension. And I take the existing pavers that are running on the right-hand side of the property, that, that, uh, that five feet, it gives me, uh, six hundred square feet. Okay. So, um,
That's what you.
Sorry, that's with.
That's about what you have there now.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It would be nine hun- let me do the math correctly. It's nine hundred, I didn't do, add that up. Nine hundred minus, I'm gonna count and I can't count. Six hundred and eighty square feet.
That's what you have there now.
Uh, no, that's a slightly more than what I have there now because I'm considering the overhang from the terrace. So I believe the overhang of the terrace is, um, I wanna say seven, God, I wanna say it's, it's seven feet by, by ten. I think it's like seventy square feet, I think, that I need to follow that, that track of the roof. So, um, that's what, you know, it would be. So I have, I, we, we have no problem, you know, reducing.
Reducing from the nine hundred.
Yes, absolutely. We'll reduce, I mean, what I came up with, you know, um, I, you know, we can reduce, what I measured today was two hundred and twenty square feet to reduce that. So it's almost identical to what I have right now. It's just literally.
Reconfigured a little differently.
Right. I'm just taking into account the overhang, just to make sure that it has a consistent walkway to the terrace.
I got you. You, you wanna use that, that terrace, the existing terrace now, and have a walkway continue to,
To the old, the new terrace.
That, that sounds completely logical.
Okay.
So how, how big is your gazebo now from the wall? Because it looks like it's almost attached to the wall. Do you know the measurement of that gazebo? Because I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you here.
No, and I appreciate it.
So I'm trying to figure out where we can come up to a happy medium here, so, um, so that you would be able to.
No, and, and, and by all means, you know, um, you know, our number one priority is that terrace, you know, so we can discuss what is appropriate, you know, for the pavers.
That's a decision you need to make.
Yes, that, we're willing, you know, and that's, and, and I'm already, and the reason why I'm saying that, that's why I'm mentioning the two hundred and twenty square feet. Which I, I feel is logical based on the concerns we're getting from this board. But yes, to answer your question, I believe that's a, might be a ten by ten? That, it's like an octagon shape? Might be ten by ten? Let me see.
So you'd have ten out, and then the length of the, 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 the length is, uh,
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight five.
Right.
I mean, that's a pretty good area. I know it's not what you wanted, but.
No, absolutely. No, it's, it's.
So what, what is being, I guess, thought about in everybody's mind is instead of fifteen feet of your terrace, maybe reduce it a little. So that it's not, remember, we're in a precarious situation. It's not like we make a decision on one and it's grandfathered in and we have to do it for everybody, but we do have to kind of follow certain, you know, patterns and stuff like that. And our, the board has traditionally been, you know, cognizant of the overall feel of Miami Lakes and the whole thing. The reason why the, I could go into a whole dissertation as to why there's a tow line and the slope and the green area and the fence and the no fence and all that stuff that make us a, a unique city.
Right.
And part of what we look at while we're open to variances for this or that, you know, you still wanna try to just not do whatever, because I personally love the plan that you're doing, but that's really whether I like it or not is irrelevant.
Right.
The, the goal here is to try to do something that works for you, but it doesn't set too much of a, of a problem and, and precedent for us going forward. Again, even though that's technically not a, you know, you just, technically speaking, you can't say, oh, you approved that, you gotta approve it to me. That's not the way this works.
Absolutely.
Um, perhaps one of the things that we could do, if we could, you know, pull back that and pull back the square footage of what you're requesting on the pavers, I think that's kind of the happy medium that we're all trying to
Right.
get at.
Yeah, I mean, um.
I don't know if you've designed in your mind, you know, what would be underneath that terrace? And how much room would that take, you know? Can you live with ten feet? Can you live with twelve feet? You know, I don't know what your plan is for the bottom, obviously, yeah, but.
Right.
That's what I guess we, we reopen is to have the conversation, the dialogue.
Because if, if you go with a detached, then that's a different story, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the detached is just.
You'd be limited to, you know, a hundred and fifty feet, so, yes, sir.
Can I ask a question, just out of curiosity to?
Absolutely.
No, it's not kosherist. You, you've attached a picture here, exhibit B, to your photo.
Right.
Is this your house that you have currently there?
No.
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 Yeah, so that, that is a neighbor's home that has, that has the same design, and his is fifteen feet. Um, and as you can see, it's still kind of tight with fifteen feet.
Yeah, he, he, that neighbor doesn't have the, when you look at the,
Tow line.
The tow line, the, the house doesn't go past the tow line.
Right.
So once, once they did that, then he had the, he had the, the space to go.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, if you, you, if you go detached, then, you know, you can have a hundred and fifty, fifty feet. This is gonna be ten by twenty-eight, two hundred and eighty square feet. I mean, it's not the four hundred or nine hundred you're looking for.
Right.
Well, the, the underneath would be four hundred, right?
There's the existing. There's the existing there. He wants to go way past that existing.
No, no, I got you.
Look at them all. They're all existing across there. We're really gonna be going through there.
Well, this is detached, though.
Yeah, someone has to detach that for you. There's the existing line. There's where the houses. He's way past the town.
No, 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 of course, and I'm a hundred percent understand.
And then we start doing it for everybody.
Trust me, I fully understand that we don't wanna open that Pandora's box. I, I, a hundred percent with you. That's why I'm saying, are we, is there an appetite for this board to look at and say, you know, you have some existing pavers there, would, going up to that edge of that, putting the columns right at the edge of the, of those pavers? Is that acceptable to this, this board, and that is acceptable to the homeowner? So we can come to a happy medium?
Right.
And something's already there, and.
Yeah, and, and the whole thing with the, you know, going back to what staff is recommending, that, that structure just doesn't fit the, you know, because of where my house is set up. That would put me so far out that I think at that point, you're really, you know, not preserving the look of the neighborhood. In this case, this is again, just, you know, following the same roof line, just an extension of what I currently have. And again, I have no problem with, you know, uh, the, the, the pavers, you know, I, I mentioned the two twenty. If it's something that we need to cut back more on, I can, I can look at really quickly the, the area where on the photo, that I'm mentioning those, um, exhibit. So on exhibit F, you know, the, those, that extension of the pavers there that are the five feet, you know, that's something that we can, you know, discuss there. If it's, if there's an appetite for cutting that back, I have no problem doing that either, but, you know, we're, we're pretty much very adamant about the terrace, because again, it's just, and, 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 and this is just a flaw in the design of the lot and the house. Um, it would probably be better if I had more length as opposed to width. It would fit better. But I'm kind of, you know, pigeonholed by the design of the home, and I wanna keep that design smoothly. Um, so it's, uh, you know, that's essentially where our focus is.
Any other questions? All right, um, are we ready to close? Comments, I'm done asking questions. Mr. Sierra? So we're gonna close public comments. Or a mo- motion to close public comments?
Second it.
All in favor? Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, it's been a long day. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, I apologize. It's just been a, a little bit of a crazy stressful day. Any suggestions for this homeowner so that we can?
I'm gonna make a motion and, you know, obviously, subject to friendly amendments, as many as you guys want. I'm thinking that, um, the way to work around this is, there's already a structure there. So this first variance, they're asking for four hundred and twenty-eight square feet, where maximum allowed was a hundred and fifty. Um, if we do a ten by twenty-eight and a half, that's about two hundred and eighty-five square feet. So what I would suggest is a motion to approve a variance of three hundred square feet to give them a little play area instead of the four twenty-eight, but more than the one fifty. And on the second one, uh, a variance of up to six hundred square feet. Um, and that could be done, and I'm just saying the six hundred square feet, not necessarily of new, but of what's there now. I'm assuming even to replace a paver, you need a permit. And so that's, that's my motion for discussion. So basically, one would be three hundred instead of the four fifty-eight, and two would be six hundred instead of the nine fifteen.
I'll second your motion. Any discussion?
For discussion, I think.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, we have discussion, yeah. I'm looking at the, uh, through the chair, I'm looking at the aerial from above here. And there's the exact similar houses right next door with the coverage next door with a pool and everything in there. And I know that he has a covered area from looking at photographs. There's at least, minimum, seven to eight feet that he could actually do his kitchen in, in that area. If you look at it, without giving any additional variance. I just allowing it to stretch out further than it is, and you go down the line, you see everybody's holding that line. There's one gazebo that's in there. I don't know if it's been permitted or not. And then one house that's a bit past the line itself on that block. I just, in good conscience, I can't, uh, I can't extend it for him, so it'll be up to you all.
Any other comments?
Not really. I mean, I, I, I see what you're saying. The only reason I'm suggesting this, because I, I saw the rest of the line, I mean, really, is that there's something already approved there with some kind of a permit, uh, of some kind of nature. And that's kind of like the terrace better than that gazebo floating back there, but that's kind of where, um... But I see where the roof line is, even his right now, according to this, is pretty much extended beyond. Forget about the gazebo. It, it's almost the furthest house down now, but...
I mean, I didn't see anything that, uh, any letter or anything from Lake Martha Homeowners Association on this property either, on this variance request. If they had been contacted and they approved it or not. I didn't see anything in the paperwork for them.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, if this, if the association has to approve this.
They, I, I don't believe they do.
Yeah, because it's, uh, I think the Lake Martha Association is only for the lake, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so that, uh, I'm...
They...
They, they, they can opine.
They actually come in and tell you what color you can paint and, and what you can do on the property. I have a townhouse on Lake Martha.
Yeah. I, I think that townhouses are a little bit...
They tell you when you can pressure clean your room.
Yeah, the townhouses are a different...
Well, they're part of the Lake Martha Homeowners Association.
Okay.
It's a complete association.
Was that something required for the variance, uh, by the town? I mean, did we, did, that should have been part of the package if it was...
No, it's not.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna play attorney now because he's being shy. The town cannot withhold a permit and/or a variance just because an association may or may not disagree with, uh, our findings. They have their own declarations of restrictions to, um, to enforce, and we, uh, do not enforce their declarations of restrictions.
By state statute or...
Pretty much, yes.
Is it by state statute?
Yeah, we, we, we can't.
While, while it is part of your, um, consideration as far as the letters of the neighbors that are coming in, so obviously, it's one of those important letters, like the letters on both sides and the person behind. Certainly, the association is an important letter, but it's not, you know, it's, it's a, absence is not dispositive of, of...
So, so there could have been another party that could have presented themselves today if they had an objection to it and, and presented as, as an entity, their objection, or presented a letter. Um, and I'm not sure if, if, and I may be completely wrong on this, uh, but I know that there are different rules, at least in, in this, in the town with regards to painting and certain things that can be done on townhomes versus single family homes. There, there's a different set of rules that apply to, to each of them. So that, that, that I know for a fact.
Okay.
I don't know if you noticed, uh, to the, to the board, um, the neighbor across, if we were looking on Google Earth, um, the neighbor across the str- uh, the, 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 the lake actually has the same home and it's, it's got a detached, um, it's a reverse from, from homeowner. And then it's got a, it's got a detached gazebo there. So, and it, and it does go past the slope. Yeah, yeah. If you look at the lake boundary line, yeah. He actually built a huge beach there, so... All right, if there's no more, I think we're...
Yeah, there's one that, one four seven one oh, date pine, has a gazebo in the back that goes out. Half the...
Yep.
Just part of the roof area, like half of what he's asking for, and goes back, past to the tie line and has a pool just past the tie line. That's the one that I saw.
Yep. Well, we have a motion on the floor, so if, uh, if you're ready to, to call for a vote, um...
What's the actual motion?
So, so the motion was to approve, uh, a variance of three hundred, uh, square feet instead of the one fifty, um, and less than the four twenty-eight that's being asked. And the second one is to approve a total of six hundred square feet, uh, where, um, I believe two...
Nine fifteen.
Two twenty-five is a, is, is our code. And that's because I'm assuming that, again, the, the, the ru- that it's not additional. I don't know if I could add that, that... The, the idea of the six hundred is not that he could build another six hundred square feet of pavers to the existing survey. It's basically six hundred square feet will be permitted.
Total.
Total.
Of, of replacement of the pavers that he currently has.
What about the variance for the pool?
There is no pool.
There is no, they're, they're not seeking a variance for the pool.
They're not gonna seek a variance for the pool?
Yeah, the third one is out.
The third one, they, they removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
The pool is, um, they have not prepared a project for that yet, but he's seeking to, uh, design it within, within parameters, within code.
Yeah. So when, when that comes along, they'll, that, that, what could potentially be of, uh, uh, something illegal is that the pavers all the way to the fence won't be allowed when they redo that pool?
The existing or the proposed?
Well, I haven't seen the proposed pool, but I'm assuming when they come in for a permit to pull the pool on the deck.
Well, if, if you approve this variance right now as requested, then yes, those pavers will be allowed to be there.
Grandfathered in.
Okay, well, so, so, okay.
You have to approve something for the actual pavers, state actual pavers, the square footage of pavers you're gonna allow to be in the area. And the size of the building that you're gonna allow to be in the area, the square footage of the actual footprint, of the extension of the roof line and roof of the existing structure further out, and how many square feet of pavers you're gonna allow underneath them, all the way across.
But the, the way that the, that the variance is worded, the second one is, we're ta- we're only talking about this maximum allowed, uh, amount of pavers beyond the tie line.
Correct.
Not, what I'm saying is when they come in, and right now, there's one six hundred square feet, probably, there. I'm just basically grandfathering in with the six hundred square feet, what's there. Um, what I'm saying is the pool right now to the right...
So the pool pavers right now?
Right.
With the exception of the ones that are beyond the tie line and the ones that are too close to the property line, within five feet of the property lines, those are allowable. If they were to seek a permit, they could get them without a variance.
You could do a pool deck all the way to your neighbor?
Five feet. That's what I'm saying. Not all the way to the neighbor, five feet.
No, that's right, right, right. That's what I'm saying, that right now...
With the exception of those which, if you choose to approve any variance, I will be adding a few conditions. And one of the conditions is that those disappear.
Oh, I just realized that the pavers are all the way down the property line.
Yes.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I was saying.
The condition of approval of anything that you, uh, approve right now, unless you approve those explicitly, which is the variance that he was, number three variance, which he has, he's no longer seeking.
Right, so that's...
So condition of, uh, condition of approval is gonna be removed.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, I'm only limiting, number one...
Right.
The new roof in the back. Number two is pavers beyond the tie line, meaning between the house and the lake, not to the sides.
Correct.
Because the sides has been removed.
Seven and a half feet beyond the tie line.
Right, right.
Not five feet before the tie line, seven and a half after.
Right, right.
Okay. Call the rule?
Calling rule for item five A with the motion made by Board Member Julia and seconded in by Vice Chair Rodriguez. Board Member Leóncio?
Yes.
Board Member Julia?
Yes.
Board Member de la Sierra?
No.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Any other items on the agenda for tonight?
Uh, yes, uh, we have, we don't have any more quasi judicial items. However, we have two ordinances. Uh, as you know, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, what part of the responsibility of this board is not only to act as a quasi judicial board uh, when it comes to variance applications, but is also to ask, act as the local planning agency as required by Florida Statute one sixty-three. Um, and that is to transmit, uh, the approval or denial or, um, with, you know, conditions of any item that affects the land development code of the town of Miami Lakes. Also, for that, we have, uh, two ordinances, uh, for you, and I'll turn it over to the, uh, planning and zoning director.
Um, so the first ordinance that we're looking at today, um, is regarding parking requirements. Um, we're updating our parking requirements to comply with new code requirements of the county regarding EV vehicles and, uh, uh, parking requirements for people with small children, um, to, to add more requirements in commercial parking lots for both of these things. Um, basically, it's, uh, um, keeping up with the county so that we are, um, it, it... This is the portion where if the council chooses to go above the requirements of the council, of the county, we may. At the, but at least we have to meet the requirement of the county, so we're not less strict than them. So this is, this is the bottom. This is the, this is the floor.
This is the minimum proposal that, that, that the town has to accept from the county.
This is if, if you, and again, you may discuss amongst yourselves, but if you choose to go above the consideration of the county, then that's something that would be recommended to, for second reading, uh, next week.
Okay.
And these are basically, I see, the forty-five degree parking, the sixty degree parking, seventy-five degree parking that they allow. They give developers in the straight end parking, so...
Mm, correct.
I read, I read through all of it, it's, right, pretty much...
These are our current regulations for parking, with the exception of the portions that are underlined and double and, and, and stricken, uh, which comes to figure one. We're adding figure one, um, for, if you see on page thirty-four, um, a required signage for, uh, uh, people with small children, special parking for people without children, which right now, we don't have any regulations requir- requesting that. So we're, um, we're requesting that they have, hold on, let me see.
That would be number five.
Correct.
All the way to C.
Correct.
Yeah, I read that.
Uh, and then, uh, as far as EVs, um...
That's further back at the, at the very end.
It's further back, correct. There's no changes, as you can see, and we're adding section eighteen oh one, uh, eighteen oh one point one with, um, how to deal with EV vehicles. And again, this is strictly meeting the requirement of the county. If you see up to nine spaces, they're requiring no charging stations. It's only after ten or, ten or more where they request twenty percent of the required parking spaces with one minimum.
A question, do, has the county taken into effect, um, of the priority of, of, are these, are they trying to put the EVs up front, giving them priority parking?
No, there's no location requirement for those.
Okay, has the town considered that due to the fact that these...
Something we can consider.
Yeah, I mean, because my recommendation would be that the town consider moving them as far back from the structure as possible um, due to the major fire hazard and the issues that you deal with these EVs when they go. They go fast, hot, and cause a lot of damage.
That is correct.
And so, my suggestion to the council would be to, um, attach to our ordinance to keep those EVs, EV parking. I mean, if you're gonna park it, okay, but if you're gonna put it on a charger...
Chargers, yes.
Yes, and, and keep it as far away from the structure as possible.
The, the requirement is for, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, not just for parking.
Right, and that, and this, this will only affect new or...
New parking, new parking areas.
New parking areas or, or refurbishment to bring it up to code?
Or whoever, yes.
Right.
Whoever's refurbishing a parking area.
Right.
Yeah, if you make it, if you, no, we wouldn't change it if you're doing a blacktop tool, I mean, uh...
Refurb, complete refurbishment, I would think.
If you're repaving...
Repaving, yes.
Blacktop, maybe, not, but repaving and recon- redoing a parking area and re...
Seal coating and repainting?
No, not that, because that would be...
Because that would be normal maintenance.
Yes, that would be an unburdened, that would be an unburden to the property owner, I would think.
Right, 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 that's what I'm saying. Normal maintenance shouldn't require them to bring in EVs. But if they're wanting to do it, they should, actually, it's a good idea. Not that I don't have one, but it's, it's a good idea. And keeping it away from the building is also a good, a great idea.
Absolutely. It's, uh, I've just seen too many EVs go up, especially while charging. Um, and they, they go so fast, um, that it really, it really, um... You almost have to pull the car away from the structure to put it out because of the time it takes.
As a fireman, you know that it's, it's almost impossible to put them out.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm saying...
Our next fireman, actually, retired firefighter.
It's like a marine, you're always a marine, you know? But yes, we, we, that's something that I would recommend to the council.
I do not see a provision as to whether it applies to refurbishing parking, um, areas, so maybe we need to add that too.
Okay.
Uh, to, uh, whenever there's a new parking configuration and not just a repaving.
A reconfiguration of the parking lot, yes. If they're just repainting, uh, seal coating and repainting the existing, it should not.
And twenty percent? Now, can a non-EV car park in front of one of these EV chargers?
It doesn't state that here, you can, yes.
No, you cannot take up one of these spaces if you're not charging. As a matter of fact, not an, an EV vehicle cannot be there if...
I don't care if it's the county or who, how it is, but they're crazy, twenty percent?
It says that here, because I didn't read it in here, yeah.
And you can't use them for parking?
Not for parking of a non-EV vehicle and not for parking of an EV vehicle either.
Because it used to be ten percent in the county, so they must have changed this to twenty percent recently.
This is new. This is, what, three months old?
Yeah, and, and, and does that spot count as a parking spot towards your...
It does.
Yes.
Total parking.
Total, so, so it doesn't, it counts whether it's an EV or not. It still counts as a parking spot, but then you can't use it.
You can't use it, wow.
Well, you can if you have an EV.
Yes.
Well, no, it's only if you're charging.
But only if you're charging.
But only for charging, I mean, it makes no sense.
You're not charging.
Imagine, imagine the parking problem that we have in, like, let's say, you go to Cancun Grill and that parking space. We're gonna get twenty percent of those spaces now have to do this EV thing? If they refurbish?
If they were coming in from, from scratch, yes.
That's insane.
I'd like to be a devil's advocate. What happened if you...
I mean, I'll be the first, can I grant a variance like, right now? Like a standing, I make a motion.
How would you, how would you charge a handicap van? When and if they get them, handicap vans to be charged there for transporting people, you know, that they have.
Good question. I don't think we make handicap spots with an AV charger.
That's my question.
I mean, it's a very good, it's...
I mean, at, at some point, they're gonna come up with these...
Very good question.
They will. It just hasn't...
At some point, they're gonna come up. I haven't seen one myself.
And, and, and I have, I have one more question, and, and maybe you can answer this. It's nothing to do with this, but I do see a lot of handicap people use the, uh, young child parking space.
They can.
They can.
They can.
They can because they can park anywhere.
So...
If you have a handicap sta- tag, you can park in any legal parking space.
I would suggest that as well to the council, to maybe tag it as, you know, additional use. Uh, or I, I maybe, I don't know if it's gonna cost, because I, I seen the fights between people that are handicapped and people that are, that are, have young children, because the spot was taken by a handicap person. And then they're like, well, that's not tagged handicap, that's for, you, you really can't park there. So it creates some animosity.
The handicap and...
On the other side, if you, if you tag it with both, then yes, it would really create some animosity.
I think the handicap can, can park and the, and the, uh, child, you know, the child, but the child cannot park in the handicap.
And, you know, tagging it would be problematic because then you're just gonna sort of like create even more conflict. If, this is one of those, if you know, you know.
Right, if you know, you know. I got you. Okay.
And I, 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 as somebody that has driven a person with a disability for many, many years, I can tell you that you can park anywhere that is legal, including blocked spaces. If, if says that is, this is for doctor so-and-so, and I'm parking there with a handicap tag, they cannot tow my car from there. So, just...
Yeah, the handicap overrides.
Overrides it.
I know, I know the county's doing, uh, they're trying to do an, uh, an abuse of handicap campaign, um, right now.
Oh, no, they should.
It's a difference, it's a definitely another story.
No, they, they should absolutely do it.
There's a huge, there's a huge push. Okay, anybody else have any more suggestions? There's a huge, there's a huge push. Okay, anybody else have any more suggestions for this parking requirement update? Other than, I mean.
I mean, how, how do we, is there any way to, to? Define the thing of, of a refurbishing or something like that, that this is not, because I don't, if it's a new build, you could design around this stuff. But some of these older shopping centers, I mean, even the new one that the Grams just built over there where Q C is at.
Well, they, they could, they could, at this point, do whatever they need to do.
Yeah, but there, because they knocked down the whole building and they, but you know.
No, but they have a lot of parking there. They have a lot of, they have the ability to do it there.
Yeah, I mean.
No, they have a lot of parking there, way more than they need for, I talked to the architect.
Yeah.
They have way more parking than is required.
Yeah, but at the one right here on Sixty-seventh Avenue where Vicky Bakery is.
Where Vicky Bakery is, there's no parking.
That would be a huge inconvenience if they tried to redesign there, you know?
Lake Patricia.
No, and it would be, and I'm, and I'm not even thinking about the inconvenience for the landowner. I'm thinking the inconvenience for our residents, because if you're saying that I could only use that space if I'm charging my EV.
It's useless.
That eliminates twenty percent of, of the parking spaces. You do that in any of our shopping centers and we're gonna have an, we're gonna have people parking in the middle of the street.
Lake Patricia has a lot of parking in the back also that most people don't see.
Yes, yes.
That people just don't know about.
They don't know about it.
It's there. I, I use it when I go there.
Yeah, it's easy, it's much easier to park there and get in and out than in the front.
Is there any way to define how this applies for, you know, can we just say that it's for new parking spaces and let?
If, if you.
Or at least suggest, obviously, we don't have the decision, the, the council is the one.
Yes, you may. Right now, I have two considerations for your recommendations for the council, remember, they're gonna hear this next week on second reading, so your recommendations will form part of the memo. I will not change the ordinance because it's how it was read in first reading, but I will add all your recommendations to the memo and I will present them to the council as this is what the planning board recommended. And if you choose to, you know, make a motion that these are your recommendations, I will add that to your memo. So the, the two that I have right now is the location far away from the main structure.
Right.
And number two, the, the configuration, what, when they're reconfiguring the parking lot, not just repaving and, and restriping.
Right.
So when there's true reconfiguration of a parking lot or.
Basic maintenance, your, your basic maintenance is.
Seal coating and restriping.
Seal coating and restriping.
Don't say repaving because repaving, then you could have forced them to make a change, but seal coating and restriping would be the one.
Any, and you wanna bring in your idea, Mr. Julia, please suggest it so we can.
Well, my, my only concern is, like, for example, sometimes when you go in and you have to, like, redo the French drain and that kind of stuff. How, is that considered in that refurbishing?
Yes.
That would be a refurbishing?
That would be, that would be.
That would be subject to this.
Drainage work?
That is structural. I mean, I.
I mean, so, so, so basically, which, which, if you're the owner of one of these.
French drains last a long time, twenty, thirty years.
I know, but I could tell you of, of a couple in, in shopping centers that I know, that the French drains, there has to be a problem with them because they flood like in two seconds.
They probably have plugged something wrong.
Yeah, but with Windexi, for example, there's a, there's a rainstorm in Hialeah and it floods the parking lot in Windexi. I don't know how that works.
They do have a, they need to clean.
There's something going on there and I, I would hate to see somebody try to fix that and then, oh no, now you gotta put twenty percent of that into EV, oh man.
Add it as, as, added as periodic maintenance for as long as they don't, I guess, if they, they're, they're just repairing an existing French drain and they're not reconfiguring the parking, they're not doing anything else other than repairing the French drain and the strip, and the parking spaces are staying again, same way. You're not changing, in my opinion, you're not changing the architectural design of that parking lot. Can we add that as part of maintenance?
Yeah, you could replace the existing French drain or actually make it a little larger if it requires because of them, it wasn't properly configured originally.
Right, but you're still not changing.
You're not changing the layout of the parking lot.
Exactly.
You're not changing the layout of the parking lot.
We can consider that, consider it as part of maintenance and attach it to your.
But it's still drainage problem.
To the main, you know, as long as it stays in the existing area, you know, and doesn't reconfigure the parking lot, I, I don't see. I mean, I, I really don't, this could bring a really a bad undue burden on these property owners, you know, that have to upgrade or, you know.
The only caveat that I have to add to that is that if, if the county's regulations require them to add these even if it's just a repaving and restriping, then we don't get to say less.
Right, I think that's understood.
So that's, and that we would be preempted by the county in that case.
That's, that's the council's battle with the county and I think the council should take that up with the county and every other of the thirty-three cities that we have that should be battling this, you know, because this really unencumbers, you know, these, these property owners, you know, to something that's gonna be very pricey because these EV chargers are expensive to install.
They're about twenty thousand dollars each, yes.
Yeah, well, that's just a purchase, that's not installation.
Just a purchase, yes, that's without doing the actual, yeah.
And if you don't have, and if you don't have the electrical backup, then you're putting in a generator, which is genius. It's genius for these EVs. You put a generator that runs on diesel to charge the EVs so you can save. So, you know, it's, it's a great system. I saw it all through California and they have all really nice, beautiful generators, huge generators.
And they're running diesel.
Running, running diesel to charge the EVs.
It's true. I know what you're talking about.
I got pictures.
And then the EVs are a lot heavier than their regular gasoline cars and they're putting more tire wear.
More stress on the roads.
More stress on the roads and more particles of the tires that are going into what the drainage system that we're just talking about.
Exactly, yeah.
So, I don't know how we're doing good.
Parking enforcement on that, that's not covered here.
So this is private parking areas. We do not necessarily enforce parking in private parking areas, am I correct, Mr.?
That is correct.
No, because I mean, my, my, you know, I have a consideration for the landowner and, but I'm just thinking outright for the consumer.
In, in general.
Park there or not park there.
With the exception of handicap parking, which is the only exception.
Yeah, that one is definitely. This one doesn't have one of those two hundred and fifty dollars if you're not a, a needy.
Right. However, private parking areas usually run by a contract with a towing company where they, the private property owner has some sort of contract with a private towing company that does their own enforcement.
But Miami Lakes policing come in and ticket somebody that's.
In a, in a handicap spot.
In a handicap spot, even though it's private parking.
Even if it's private parking, yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure that's correct.
Yes, correct, yes. But no other kind of parking, if you're parking in the ten-minute dry cleaner spot.
No, that's not, that's not enforcement.
Police would not get involved in that.
I believe in the child, the, the young child parking, it is an ordinance, but I don't think, it's not one that they enforce. But, I mean.
It's more of it.
Yeah, again, I, and any property owner can contract with a towing company. I, I would imagine that these property owners were not gonna tell them, I mean, that would be terrible for their business to tell these people. Tow the cars, tow the cars.
No, that's not gonna happen.
Now, a tow company, and, and Mr. Turner maybe ans- answer this just to make sure that if we need to add it. A tow company can't just arbitrarily go onto private property and tow cars because they go, oh, that car's not charging, it's in violation and I'm towing it without permission of the property owner. Correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so we don't need to add that, alright.
The hour thing that says on this little thing, hour charging, seven AM to six PM, is that also like part of the sign that has to go on or is that just? I mean, I don't really care, but it just sounds kinda weird. Or is that, or is that done on purpose so that after six PM? That's just for example.
You know, what's, what's, and this is a, a good point. The apartment dwellers are coming home from work and they're taking their EVs to all these local charging stations and they're putting them to charge. And then their friend comes to pick them up, takes them home, depending on what charge level you use it at. And then the car's charged and there's nobody there. I mean, it, it, it is just, it's one of these things that, I guess we call it poor planning.
Well, they leave them because it takes so long to, to charge.
Exactly, right, and then the next one gets upset.
But if it does catch fire, it's gone.
Yep. Alright, so I think we're done with the, 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 do we have two or three recommendations? Miss Alon, I think we have two, right?
So the two configure, the two recommendations that I've heard are that, that this be triggered for remodeling parking lots when it's a reconfiguration of the parking lot, not just regular maintenance and/or drainage maintenance and/or repaving. So that'll be a line at the beginning.
That would be restriping and the seal coating.
Right.
Not paving, not paving because paving requires physical.
Right, at some point, at some point, there's a, there's a point where a reconfiguration of a parking lot requires adding handicap spots if you don't have them.
Right.
And the lot, right now, this would be triggered as well.
Well, if your parking lot doesn't comply to the present code and you go to pull a permit to repay, to, to stripe and seal coat, they'll make you.
They'll make you comply.
Comply.
Right, so.
For, for the handicap.
Now, now, there is gonna be some paving as part of the French drain maintenance. Because once they dig up, they have to, so we need to include, we need to include that paving to repair that area of, of French drain. Again, this is all based on what the county's gonna accept.
Yes.
So maybe we'll do it, add that, that additional pay, replacement of, of current paving for, you know, potholes or French drain maintenance or something like that, so that, you know, it, it's obviously part of general maintenance and not additional paving in the area. Or adding parking spaces because that'll trigger the, the aspect. Okay, I think we're done beating that one up.
Beat the dead horse.
So, do, we have a motion?
So you just have to make a motion to transmit to the council with the recommendations.
Alright, so, somebody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion with those recommendations.
Alright, and I'll second it.
There you go.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna make your life easy, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make your life easy. On the quasi judicial, if I'm running the meeting, you can run the roll. If not, let's, let's move on. Alright, so let's go to our second.
Come on, Nelson, take it easy. No, that's true. On this canopy's an accessory building, this is only, on the canopy's an accessory building, this is basically for this west end? West of Eighty-seventh Avenue?
Uh, no, this is for townwide.
Townwide?
Yes.
So townhouses would also be?
Townhouses are different than, this is for single-family homes.
It would only be for single-family because it does bring in zero lot lines?
And zero lot lines, correct, which are not townhouses. Townhouses and zero lot lines are different.
I know, that is so cool.
Well, steps, everything is steps.
Steps, yes. So this includes single-family.
RU, RU one and RU one Z. So zero lot lines and single-family.
And single-family, are you okay? Townwide.
Townwide, correct. And what we are amending it to be is, this is basically chasing variances that we've had granted in the last eight years since I've been here. One of the most common ones is the one that reducing the distance from the main structure to the, to the canopy. Uh, we're reducing it to the same distance that is allowed in the RU one Z right now, which is six feet.
But, is that thirteen five oh two?
Also the old roof overhangs.
Say that again?
And number three, it says accessory buil- buildings shall be detached a minimum of ten feet from the residence.
Correct, that's the, that's the existing language and we are proposing that it be reduced to six feet.
No, the ten feet is underlined, the ten feet is underlined, so that's part of what you're allowing.
That needs to be scratched out.
Yeah, 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 that's a mistake, that's a mistake.
Okay. As I say, ten feet is underlined also, so.
Yeah, because the underline is you're adding. I think it says it should be a minimum of six feet?
Minimum of six, six feet from the residence, yes.
And a minimum of how many feet from roof overhangs?
Uh, that's the question.
If you're measuring from the wall, six feet or?
If you're measuring, if it's six feet, see, that's another thing that didn't make any sense because if you have ten feet from the residence to the, to the thing and the overhangs are only allowed to be one foot each, then by default, ten minus two is eight, not six. So this was one of those things that never made any sense.
Overhang is only one foot?
Yeah, uh, okay, allowable encroachment overhangs are only one foot.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's two feet. Isn't a normal roof overhang from an existing house?
An overhang can be as, as large as the physics allow you to be. When you're encroaching into a required yard, it's a foot.
No, I know, but I'm just thinking, so, I'm thinking the person that has already a house, the typical house in Miami Lakes right now, El Alero, the overhang is what, two feet, two and a half feet?
Again, if, if it's not encroaching on the required yard, it can be up to five feet.
No, no, like the rear, because we're doing the rear.
But if it's encroaching, the maximum that it can be is one foot.
You can have as big an overhang as the architect can design or the engineer. As long as it doesn't approach on the.
But when you're measuring the six feet, you're measuring from the overhang or from the wall?
And remember that. Remember that all of these are allowable encroachments. So everything we're discussing in this point are things that are allowed to be encroaching on the required rear yard. So by default, we are discussing encroachments on the required rear yard because if they're not encroaching, then we don't care. Right, then this part of their main structure and it could be whatever it is that they wanna decide is between their, their allowable setbacks, right? So this is on those last twenty-five feet, that is their required rear yard, or the, the last twenty feet or the last fifteen feet if they've been granted a variance for a fifteen-foot backyard, that's, that's what we're discussing. Okay, not, not anything that is outside of those setback lines.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is, so, go, going back to the first sentence, the accessory building shall be detached a minimum of six feet from the residence. Are we talking six feet from the overhang or are we talking six feet from the wall?
From, from the wall.
From the wall, right. Okay.
And accessory buildings are sheds, storage sheds?
Gazebo's, storage sheds.
And now summer kitchens. Now we'll be allowing summer kitchens with this.
Right.
Which is good.
Correct. Well, we're mentioning summer kitchens. They were never mentioned before because they weren't a thing, so now we're adding mention of them as a thing.
Which is so good.
But then, so that, so I'm reading on page forty-eight, thirteen five oh two, fifteen oh two, sub number two. No, number three. The one that has the ten feet that I know that's a mistake, it should be six feet. Now, the second thing it says, and a minimum of blank feet from roof overhangs.
And that should be four.
Four, right.
Right, because.
So this is where I'm thinking, honestly.
One from one side and one from the other.
I know, but the, the roof that's on the house, if it's an old house, already has two.
Two.
Oh, am I gonna tell them to chop off that overhang? Probably not.
Well, then, then you need to move the thing a little bit.
Then it would be no overhang on over here. So that's why I'm thinking maybe we do three, so that'll be two and one.
Even on a gable den, on a gable den, is there an overhang on a gable den?
No.
I have no idea.
Uh, row, is there a gable, on a gable den, is there an overhang?
Yeah, there's a little bit of an overhang, yeah, a foot, a foot, yeah. You can make it more, you can make it whatever, like I said, whatever the engineer is on.
The hips, the hips are usually two feet and I've seen the gable dens, very minimum, right, a foot.
I personally think anything less than eighteen inches looks silly, but.
Yeah.
Our code contemplates a foot as the allowable approach of it for a roof, so that's the, we gotta go with what we have.
But that's the allowable encroachment into the setback, so.
But this, here we're talking house to, to gazebo.
Correct.
So we're saying wall to wall, six feet, now it's roof to roof. Are we gonna allow four feet?
Four feet, three feet?
Is that gonna be enough, four feet?
I always thought it was silly just to tie it on, but whatever.
No, I.
I have always felt that you should have it connected, but, because getting wet, but whatever.
I, I always thought it was silly to, to, to have it detached as well.
Yeah, 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 but it's in the, it's the code.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, they do, they do look at the fire code too because people are barbecuing, so that's why they have it detached away from the home and now technically summer kitchens.
So, so this is where, like.
You're absolutely right.
Good conversation, because this is where this, this, this goes to, right? We have detached structures that allow a larger space to be enclosed and then we have.
Then attached.
Attached structures, which we have. Attached structures, which we have looked in the past, which are the ones like we were considering this afternoon, which are a different kind of encroachment onto the rear yard.
Which is gonna end up being a summer kitchen.
Correct, so, and they're both likely to end up as summer kitchens. In some yards, the detached structure is not even possible, it's just not feasible, especially if you're putting in ten feet between the, the home and the, and the structure itself, you end up with a long skinny thing, which is why we, I think it was last year or the year before, allowed those to be attached to the home instead of detached, and then now you allow that same square footage attached to the home, right? So that's, that's a little bit of the play that we're trying to do. And again, this is, this is all because, you know, all of a sudden, these structures are very in vogue and everybody wants one. And hence the three million variances that we keep hearing every couple of weeks. Now, what is the right, the reason that you have to have some sort of detachment is that then the setback on the side are five feet, right? If you want them attached, we requested a larger setback, which is part of the discussion here as well, that's another part that we haven't gotten to yet. Okay, where we're reconsidering for even smaller yards how that works. Okay, we're not there yet.
Well, I see it.
Right?
Actually, these summer kitchens, in reality, should be an extension of the inside kitchen, if they're gonna have a summer kitchen be connected. And they, we, as a town, should require, because you can do it, connecting fire, two fire sprinklers in that area, which can be connected to a regular one-inch water surface by code. You can have two fire sprinklers in these outdoor kitchens to be able to put them out, that's something that he was bringing up.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, you, 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 you can require two heads, 'cause they're at seventy-five square feet, and then, you can do it right from the water source, they don't have to have a fire pump.
Nope.
They don't have to have anything, it just has to be a constant open line.
Right.
To the sprinkler head, but I don't know, do you wanna get into that?
And it's possible if by.
Yeah, they do have residential fire sprinklers.
By the pressure, if it comes in, you can have two heads in a, in a house, and any, you could put it in any kitchen actually, but I would suggest.
My, my concern is whether that belongs on the town code or on the fire code.
It should be somewhere that, that it's in there, uh, most of the cooking you do out in the summer, in these summer kitchens, are things that re, like fish or whatever, they require hot oil, that they don't want in the house to create the smell or the heat. That's what I see, and what historically I've seen at people's houses.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay without adding the, uh, undue burden onto the resident to add that sprinkler head, um, but if Mr. Sierra would like that.
No, I just say it's something that makes sense.
Right, right, no, it does make sense. What'd be nice is, um, maybe offer it to, as part of the building variance or building permit, that our building department suggests, hey, look, here's a suggestion, um, this is possible, and this is a safety thing that you can add to your, you know, because, I mean, if we go, we can also add cooking hoods and all that other stuff.
Oh, yeah, then we're gonna be crazy.
You know, exactly.
But we could stop the fire.
Yeah, yeah.
Or slow it down.
Yeah, you can also just require a fire, a class C fire extinguisher, but, you know.
Which is better for grease fire.
Yeah, and it'll be set, it'll, but it'll sit outside in the weather, so, you know, it gets, a fire sprinklers outside, require a lot of maintenance, and that's the only problem with adding that, especially to a residential. Go ahead, Ms. Clerk, we're ready for part two.
Alright. So basically, and the, just in summary, the, the accessory buildings that are detached, okay? We are, um, um, reducing the distance from the accessory building to the mains, to the main home, to be six feet and, we said four or three, and that's something you, you can.
I would suggest three, because I know that the, more than likely, the roof already has two, and then if you're gonna leave one over here, that, six minus three is three. It's my suggestion, not. I don't know, that's kind of, I, I did it on my calculator on my phone.
No, alright. We have common court math, I'm just curious.
No, it makes sense.
See, if you look at the RU one C, they, they allow six feet, and this is again our current code, six feet from the main residence and five feet from roof overhangs, which doesn't make any sense.
I don't understand that, yeah.
Yeah, that, those numbers don't make any sense.
Doesn't. So it would be the same thing, wouldn't they do six and three? It's gonna be the same thing whether you're an RU one Z or a zero lot line or wherever you're at?
Uniform six and three.
And again, uh, the main portion as well is that we continue to allow only twenty percent of the required rear yard, and that's important, like, this is a proportional number to the yard, maximum three hundred and fifty square feet, that's not being, being changed.
Right, and these are open, so there's not, because the, there is a limit, the limitation of enclosed is still there, the hundred feet and the sixty feet, right? That's not changed.
Correct. If we go back to the canopies, which is the attached structure that we added a couple of years ago to allowing smaller yards, um, to have a larger attached canopy, uh, if you don't have a small yard, your largest attached canopy can be seven and a half feet, or seven feet, seven feet, and again, that's an encroachment, right? Plus, seven feet plus whatever, uh, distance from your home to the actual setback line, right? So sometimes that results in a larger canopy, uh, but the, the, in, in yards that are twenty-five feet or less, where a detached structure is difficult to fit, right? Uh, we were allowing them to go to halfway, to the, halfway to the required setback. Which, in the case of a twenty-five foot, would be twelve and a half, in the case of a twenty, would be ten, in the case of a fifteen, is seven and a half, and this is where we start running into trouble, 'cause seven and a half is really not.
The minimum.
It's the minimum for like basically a shade structure, right?
Yeah, it's the minimum, yeah.
Uh, so we're trying to tweak that a little bit better to, you know, especially on those smaller yards, like fifteen feet, which exist in the town of Miami Lakes.
Yeah, unfortunately, the west side, the west, uh, west lakes has a lot of these odd, odd re, odd shaped homes.
Yes.
Um, that, 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 that are caught into these.
Into these, yes.
A lot, a lot of the ordinance in Miami Lakes that has changed throughout the years is because of this awkwardness of, of west lakes, the, the way they built the homes.
And, and it's what we're seeing in, uh, in our various requests, uh, we've seen several of these through the years, where, you know.
Like, one of, one of the things that I, that I always, and, and it's kind of here to an extent, so on your required rear yard, on, on two A one, it says the attached canopy can project into the required re, rear yard setback. What happens to the side setbacks? Because sometimes in these, in these, especially these zero lot line homes, that they think, I could start from the, the property line, 'cause my house started from the property line, now what do you do with, with the side setbacks? Is there anything here with side setbacks?
So there is one, that's a two-part question, there is some properties, uh, and I don't remember where I put this, what is this like? There are some properties where the side yard is functioning as the rear yard, because they're just, especially, they're, um, they're in west lakes, they're actually, uh, homes where the side yard is like a U shape.
Yep.
And their side yard is actually acting as the rear yard, because their pool is in there and everything is in there, but it's actually a side yard. Those, we're adding a little caveat here so that we can treat those side yards as rear yards and allow them to have canopies there, because canopies are not allowed in, in side yards unless they are covering a door or a window, and they're maximum five feet, um, in projection.
Right.
Which is basically for shade.
Or to keep you from getting wet.
Or for, to keep you from getting wet as you access a door, right? Like, just basically a little shade over your door. Um, the ones that you're discussing right now, which are the, the RU ones C's that have actually ten feet from one structure to the next property line, and there's several properties that have roofed that entire thing all the way to the property line, and that we cannot allow, no matter how we, we don't have a variance to grant, 'cause they're covering their four-foot easement, that is a drainage easement that we cannot encroach upon, so that's not even a setback, that's, that's a required easement for drainage. So the most that we could allow there, if you think, would be those six feet. And then one foot encroachment for, uh, for.
You're only gonna leave feet, four feet then for.
But it would still be a very, very small canopy.
Yeah, but that's so rare, that's gonna be.
It's not rare.
Exactly, over there it's not rare.
You think, you think it's more than that?
Yeah, I, I know several homes, and then some of those homes.
There's several violations.
No, no, I understand the violations, I'm talking about that aren't even gonna have four feet.
So the four-foot, uh, required easement for drainage is standard in RU one C homes?
No, no, I know, what I'm saying is, is, is there homes now with current construction, not in, in violation, that will only min, that will only have either the four or the six feet, so they only have a two-foot canopy? Well, three feet because of the over, the one foot.
Six feet, six feet, because they have ten feet.
They usually have ten feet, they have ten feet.
There's ten feet for property.
That should be the minimum, is the ten feet.
They have a ten feet and they allow a walkway in there.
Right, and then, and, and of course, we're not gonna allow any attachment to the other property. So let's say they're buddies and they decide, yeah, you can attach to my home, alright, just wanna make sure we don't allow that here.
There's, there's a couple of those already.
Oh, we know, I know.
Quite a few.
Alright, any, any suggestions?
And then the guys that don't want you in the yard to paint the wall.
Any, oh, yeah, that's another issue.
Yeah.
You wanna paint the wall, you can, I know a couple of my friends, hey, the guy won't let me paint.
Okay, and then they, and then they paint it, and you can't go onto their property to paint.
They paint it whatever color.
They paint it whatever color they want.
Yeah.
I know, we had that, those problems when. Um, any other suggestions, any other modifications to this ordinance, or leave it as is, and I'm sure you're gonna cur, do all the corrections on the, uh, on the errors, correct? Any other corrections, are we leaving it at three and three, you wanna? You want that three?
Just suggest a six and three would be.
That's your motion? Motion to six and three? And then, anybody wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay? Second by gentleman, and then, uh, you wanna call rule, too?
Sure, let's go ahead. Calling rule for item five C, with the corrections made, uh, motion by Vice Chair Rodriguez and seconded by De La Sierra, correct?
No, they all.
The motion is by Mr. Julia.
Oh, Julia, correct.
Motion is by Julia and was seconded by Mr. Leoncio.
Okay. Motion by Board Member Julia, seconded by Board Member Leoncio, let's go ahead here. Board Member Julia?
Yes.
Board Member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Board Member Leoncio? And Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Yes.
The motion passes.
See, we have any.
Yeah.
Alright, so before we close the meeting, do we have any additional information from the town attorney or town staff?
Any report from?
Any reports, anything you wanna discuss?
No reports at this time, I do wanna bring up that we're working on our transportation master plan, this is a point of privilege, I'm using all the microphones I have. We're working on a transportation master plan and our, uh, Vision Zero master plan for the town. Um, we have a little website where, uh, everybody gets to put their input and their opinions about both, transportation master plan and the Vision Zero, um, I know we have, uh, some, uh, people interested in this kind of thing, the Vision Zero is about, um, um, it's a goal of, uh, going down to zero fatalities and/or, um, high injuries, uh, by twenty fifty, due to traffic accidents and/or crashes, so I think it's a very lofty goal for the town, and uh, we're, we have a wonderful consultant that is doing a great job of producing great statistics and, uh, recommendations, and we need everybody's input, uh, so, go onto the town website, there's a link there, and we need everybody's opinion.
I know that Major Gonzalez has done incredible job.
Yes.
With controlling the traffic down Miami Lake way all the way, he's done an amazing job. I've talked to him over and over for the last five years of what he's done, he's a, the man is amazing.
Uh, they call him the traffic whisperer.
No, no, he's a.
No, no, they, they literally call him the traffic whisperer.
I believe he's amazing.
And, uh, I, I would love to participate since, since I was part of the original, um, traffic plan and, and, and all that stuff. So anything that, that you need from me that I can participate, I'd love to, and I'll go onto the website and, and do my research there.
We are having, um, two meetings in September for traffic, we're, we're doing our, our outreach right now, community outreach. This is where everybody's opinion counts, uh, and it's about also pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, um, obviously on the transportation master plan angle, uh, you know, facilities that we need to like look forward to building in the next five to ten years. Um, we're looking for safety improvements everywhere, uh, and anything and everything is important at this point, 'cause, uh, the more, the more cooks in the soup right now, the more versions of everything we get. So, uh, I appreciate y'all, I've volunteered some of y'all for some of the programs, um.
Got no problem. I'm fine with it.
And, and, uh, yeah, you know, I appreciate your involvement.
What?
We will be presenting to you, uh, sometime either September or October, when we have a little more data put together, I'll put it on your agenda so the consulting will come and give you the preliminary findings that they've already found.
If, if you would, um, please share whatever emails or whatever you're sending out with us. I know that since we don't have the Miami Lakes email, uh, but if you're sending anything out to us, it'd be great to.
I hear our social media was, uh, all over today, so it's on, it's on the town's social media today. We will be putting it all of our, all over our social media as well, hopefully in the next few weeks consistently.
Do you have the dates are in?
Repeatedly, uh, and the dates will be, uh, September eighth and September, yes, the fourth and the eighth, yes.
Excellent.
Okay, what, you know what's happening with fifty seven, fifty-ninth Avenue?
It's still, it's still under process, we're, we're gonna be dem, uh, demolishing the actual building, um, in the, probably the next month or so. Um, and then the, uh, next portion is finalizing agreements with Miami Dade County. Uh, we also have to finalize agreements with Caterpillar and Miami Dade, uh, public schools as the way that the bridge and the alignment are, are going to be connected, we're gonna need certain easements from them, so, it's still moving forward.
Alright.
And, one more question, the, uh, seventy-seventh Avenue, there was a lot of concerns about the, um, the, the, the traffic, uh, project being done, the road project by the school.
We were promised that they would be finished and wrapped up by the beginning of school.
Not gonna happen.
And I drove by this morning and I still saw a fire cone, so I, I'm gonna be raising up a little sting tomorrow about whether or not they're wrapped up, 'cause they promised.
It's all over social media, so.
Yes.
A lot of parents are concerned, so that's why I.
They, yes, but, but it's, it, it was.
It's gonna make a nightmare of Royal Oaks.
Correct, yeah.
Alright, motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. God, you're good. I'm sorry for being negative.